Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, September 4th, 2025. Thank God school's back in and I know the Eagles play this evening, so we'll get a move on. Eileen, opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 3rd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beto.
Here.
Mr. Greenfield is excused tonight. Mr. Carbonic is on his way. Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Mr. Tannenhaus is absent tonight. Councilman Nadel is excused tonight. Mayor Leggio.
Here.
Mr. McNicholas is excused tonight. Mr. Friedman.
Here.
And Chairman Husser.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, would everybody please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance? And afterwards, a moment of silence for our men and women who have served both here and abroad.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their public for which they stand, one nation, under God, in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Eileen, are there any minutes?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Any correspondence?
No correspondence tonight.
Any resolutions?
No resolutions tonight.
Okay, thank you. On to submission waivers, the first being case number SP 1138, JNS Flex Center LLC. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gregory Vella of Collins, Vella &amp; Casello. I have the pleasure this evening to represent JNS Flex Center LLC regarding the waiver requests. We'll wait what Ms. Newman wants and we'll agree to it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have an August 22nd, 2025 review letter. The submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three. I would recommend that at a minimum, a narrative environmental impact report be provided. Similarly, I recommend that item 60, the 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis be provided. And as it relates to the items D through H, I think that those should be provided, they don't need to be provided for completeness, but on a separate submission. But I do recommend a narrative environmental impact report as well as the drainage, the 2,000-foot downstream be provided prior to the application being deemed complete.
Thank you. Counsel, are you good with that?
Mr. Chairman, no objection.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, any questions about this one? All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Friedman?
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Submission waiver approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, we'll get our engineer working and hope to see you within the next few months.
All right, great. Thank you. Have a good night.
I'm not going far. What's the next one?
Up next.
Okay. First application this evening is case number SD... Okay. Case number SD 3018 Carmine Caruso. This is a minor subdivision. Good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Again, my name is Gregory Vella, Law Firm, Collins, Vella &amp; Casello, and I have the pleasure this evening to represent Carmen Caruso in this minor subdivision application, which is essentially just simply a lot line adjustment. No new lots are being created. Very simply, we have three lots. We are modifying the lot lines to provide Caruso Escavating Company on one lot, a vacant conforming lot, and another lot, a conforming lot area that has the existing sign that this board approved previously. There is not a shovel going into the ground. There's no drainage going in the ground. We're simply taking the lot lines that are wonky. As you can see, they run kind of like north to south, and we're adjusting them to still have three lots. But the lots to the left or the middle lot will be, it's still vacant, there's nothing on it, there's just trees. Eventually, that hopefully will be developed at some future time. We don't know what we're gonna do, but I do know we'll have to come back to you guys for any approval. We're doing nothing else.
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in?
Sure.
I know because I agree with Mr. Vella's introduction, wholeheartedly. And there are a number of variances that are identified in our letter dated. I don't even know what the date is on my frickin' letter. Hold on, September 3rd. And, you know, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, all these things. All we said is that nothing is changing on the site.
Right.
It's just a factor of the realignment of the lot lines. And then the lot that they're creating that is vacant, as Mr. Vella had indicated, is conforming. So they're not creating a non-conforming lot. And I also want to add, for the record, that the lot where the billboard is located is actually increasing in size. So we take no exception to the lot line adjustment. I think that it's consistent with our planning and zoning goals.
Got it.
If you guys want to hear more testimony, that's totally fine.
I mean, I read through this, gentlemen. I don't know if you did your research before you came here, but it's pretty simple, in my opinion.
I agree. And I feel like it's an improved condition over what's there now. And yes, there are some things that technically need relief because the lot lines are changing, but it's an existing condition. The development on the property is not changing whatsoever. So I take no exception to what they've asked for, and it's up to you guys if you want to hear more.
Got you.
Mr. Chair, the two reports by the planner and the engineer, any of those conditions in there, we will agree to provide that information. Again, it's not much because we're not putting a shovel in the ground.
Yep.
So we'll agree to those reports, but it's up to you. I do have my planner here, I have my engineer. It's up to you, Mr. Chair. I'll do whatever you want.
Gentlemen, any questions on this one?
I read it, too.
Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, close the public portion.
One comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Laura.
I would just recommend that if the board acted favorably, that the subdivision be filed by map, not deed.
Is that okay?
We were gonna do that anyway, sir.
Perfect. I will entertain a motion at this time.
Motion.
Mayor Leggio, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Beto. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you professionals.
See you on the next one.
Good luck watching.
Take care. Okay, the final one this evening is case number SD 3022 Cody Milch 2011 Trust. This is a preliminary and final major subdivision, Block 3, Lot 2701 on Ramtown Greenville Road. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Michael Vidello. I'm an attorney at Giordano, Haller &amp; and Cisla, representing the applicant tonight. As you indicated, this is a single vacant lot. We're seeking preliminary and final major subdivision to create three single-family residential development lots out of this single lot. We are not requesting any variances. There is a minor waiver being requested. I have with me here my civil engineer. We have our exhibits and you have our application package. We have no comments, generally speaking, with all the reports and the comments in the reports, except only, I believe, my engineer can elaborate, there was a comment in the report asking, the applicant does not know what the houses would look like on these lots yet. They don't have architectural plans, they're just creating the lots right now. We're fully aware of your look-alike ordinance, and we would make sure that the homes comply with that. So we would provide architected rules to demonstrate compliance with that, but it wouldn't be as part of the subdivision, it would be prior to seeking building permits, construction permits, because we simply don't have those drawings at this time.
Okay.
Other than that, and my engineer can confirm, I believe, we had no real questions or comments with those reports, other than we can comply.
Okay. Well, I'll open it up to Jennifer and Laura on this one.
I mean, I think the engineer should directly introduce...
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if we could, because there are members of the public here, which...
Absolutely. I didn't know if you wanted to cover some preliminary comments or issues first.
Yeah, I didn't know if you guys wanted to have any questions or just let the engineer...
We could, he'll briefly describe the whole...
That's perfect. That works.
Yes, please.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Douglas Hanley, H-A-N-L-E-Y. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I work at Dynamic Engineering where I'm a project manager. I've testified before various planning and zoning boards throughout the state. All this is my first opportunity in front of Howell Township.
And we'll accept your credentials. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Doug, use the application and the exhibit plans that were submitted. Those were prepared by you or others under your direction and controls, is that correct?
That is correct.
So using those application materials and the exhibits you see here tonight, describe for the board briefly how the site currently exists and what the proposal includes.
Sure. Do you mind switching to the first exhibit, the A1 aerial map? Perfect. Thank you so much. So on the screen now is titled Aerial Map Exhibit Prepared by My Office, dated September 4th, 2025. It's essentially the same sheet as Sheet 2 of our site plan set. If we want, we can mark it A1.
It's A22.
A22? Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. So on the aerial map exhibit, you'll see a couple different colors. In the center of the sheet, there is a yellow property boundary, and that is the property we are here tonight to discuss. It is Block 3, Lot 27.01. It has frontage on Ramtown Greenville Road. It's approximately 6.5 acres in size and has about 490 feet of frontage on that road. It's currently a wooded lot. It's bordered to the north by residential uses, the east by residential uses, the south by residential, and then to the west by an agricultural use, the Muddy Creek Farm.
Of course, farm.
And just to close the loop on the existing conditions, the property is in the agricultural rural estate 2, the ARE2 zone, where single-family residential dwellings are permitted. Now, if you don't mind switching to that second sheet? So this we can mark as A23?
Is that A23, sweetie?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the site plan rendering. This is prepared by our office, also dated September 4th, 2025. And this is essentially a colorized version of our site plan sheet with the landscaping colorized and a couple other colors, just for visual presentation to the board. We're here tonight seeking major subdivision approval for the three lots that are shown on the plans, as well as the various site improvements that are shown on the plan as well. Each lot is compliant with the bulk requirements of the ARD2 zone, and we are using the lot averaging bulk requirements. We submitted a conventional lot layout as part of the completeness review, which allowed us to reduce the minimum lot size and some of the setback requirements, but we are compliant with the township ordinance. Just for orientation purposes, we consider north to the top of the sheet, so I refer to the lots, I'll do so in that fashion. Proposed Lot A is the easternmost lot, that's on the right-hand side of the sheet. That's approximately 2.35 acres in size, where one is required. Lot B, which is the northern lot, that's 1.85 acres in size, and then proposed Lot C, which is the western lot, that is proposed, or 1.98 acres. In the middle of each lot, you'll see a orange, light brown rectangle. Those are the proposed footprints at this time. Like Mr. Vidello said, the homes for each lot have not been designed yet. They're going to be custom homes, and we would like to request that architected rules would be submitted to the township at the time of plot plan review.
So those are just demonstrative? They're not the current...
Exactly. They're about 4,500 square feet in size, 75 by 60, but that doesn't mean that's exactly what is going to be submitted for each plot plan. And just to put it on the record, like Mrs. Vidello mentioned, we will, we already have a note on our plans, and we'll make sure it makes it onto the plot plan that the township look-alike ordinance will be met when those architectural plans are submitted. In the middle of those three dwellings, you'll see a cul-de-sac that is the proposed street. It's labeled as Road A, which provides access to Ramtown Greenville Road for the three proposed dwellings. Road A is intended to be a public road dedicated to the township. It contains a 50-foot right-of-way and a 48-foot radius on the cul-de-sac, and it's about 225 feet in length from Ramtown Greenville to the back of the cul-de-sac at the northern end of that road. Each dwelling has a driveway that is 20 feet wide by approximately 40 feet in length, at least 40 feet. It varies a little bit with the radius of the cul-de-sac. And the intention is for parking, entry parking, to be allowed on the western portion of the road and not allowed on the eastern side or within the cul-de-sac. That was based off discussions with the review engineer and for fire truck circulation, that parking would only be on that one side of the road. For landscaping...
Can I just jump in?
Absolutely.
This is just a traditional subdivision, right? You're not really doing the lot averaging?
We are doing the lot averaging.
So we need to, you need to walk the board through. I don't have a yield plan, it wasn't submitted, but you need to walk the board through the compliance with the lot averaging requirements.
Absolutely. Sure.
And I'm gonna ask real quick, I'm gonna ask Doug to comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, the lot averaging was done because you have one piece of property, you create three lots. Every homeowner gets about the same size backyard. But then you put a detention basin on the lot, and now one homeowner says, hey, I don't have much of a backyard. So it was pointed out to us, I think it was municipal staff that pointed out to us, you know, if you've used the lot averaging and prove that you're still, you're not gaining extra lots, you can actually adjust the backyards, so the person with detention basin still has the same green areas as neighbors, and the lot lines slide a little to allow that basin to fit on that lot also. So Doug, am I correct that that was the intent of the averaging?
Yes, and there was a lot, or a conventional lot layout exhibit submitted during completeness review, and I'll make sure, Ms. Beem, you get a copy of that?
No, it needs to be now. So what, when did you submit it? I, you have to understand, we have to be able to deem that it's fully compliant. That's what she asked for. Whether the direction was to go to lot averaging or not, I need to be able to pull it up to show that you yield fully complying three lots with the underlying zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a copy of it on this flash drive. I don't...
When, when did you submit it? Was it part of your original submittal?
It was not part of our original submittal. We came here in June for a completeness hearing, and we submitted a few weeks after that, I would say early July was the submission date.
Eileen, that folder's empty.
Do you have it on the thumb drive?
I do have it on the thumb drive.
How do I go back to the document distribution? Conventional lot layout. Got it.
There you go.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. Perfect. I can run through this. This is a good place to get started. I apologize for not starting here. Okay. So to take a step back for a moment, we prepared this conventional lot layout exhibit, which shows three lots on the same property with the compliant, a compliant layout with the standard ARE2 zoning. So the main difference, well, some of the differences in the requirements, hang on, I misplaced my outline here. Under conventional subdivision, you need a minimum lot area of two acres. So our subject property is six and a half acres, so we were able to put this layout together with lots A, B, and C to provide a minimum of two acres on each lot. And compliance setbacks for the side rear, compliant buffers. And once you're able to do that, then the ordinance allows you to then apply a lot averaging bulk requirement, which reduces the lot area from two acres to one acre. It reduces some of the setback requirements. It doesn't change the buffer requirement, so that stays the same between the two layouts. But like Mr. Vidello mentioned, it allows you to adjust the lot lines slightly, in this case, to allow for a more uniform lot layout while accounting for the stormwater basin that is proposed on Lot A. So as I mentioned, for the three lots that we are proposing under the lot averaging, Lot A is 2.35 acres, so that is a little bit larger than the standard requirement, and that's to account for the stormwater basin, which is on the eastern side of the site between the building on Lot A and Ramtown Greenville Road. It's shaded with a little bit of a more grayish-green color, and I'll get to that in a few moments when we touch on the stormwater design. So that is 2.35 acres, where under the lot averaging, only one acre is technically required. And then, as such, then Lots B and C are slightly under the two acres, which, again, is permitted because of the lot averaging ordinance. So Lot B is 1.85 acres, which is less than the two, however, greater than the one acre. And then same thing, Lot C is 1.9 acres, slightly under the two, but it's over the one, so the three lots would be compliant.
That's fine. I just wanted you to walk through it for everybody. I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. I just wanted you to walk through it on the record.
We want to get it on the record. And for the board's benefit, too. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Happy to run through that. So then going back to the proposed layout, so just to touch on landscaping quickly, my office met with Ms. Barrow onsite to go over the proposed buffering from our original design, revision zero of the plan. Based on her findings and our landscape architect's finding, the existing buffer is in, it needed some love, for lack of better terms. So we, you can see around the perimeter of the site, there's a 50-foot perimeter buffer along the road and then along the other two sides as well. We're looking to supplement that with native trees rather than some of the invasive species that are out there today to enhance the buffer. So in total, we're providing 120 trees onsite between the buffer and the street trees along the cul-de-sac and frontage, as well as a significant amount of ornamental grasses within the bio retention basin. Again, we'll get to the stormwater design in a few moments. There is a design waiver requested.
Stop at the buffer. Go ahead. I just want to chime in on the property here. So I do want to make sure that the board understands this property is really not wooded. There's vegetation there. I'm assuming this was a field years ago, and what has grown there are invasive trees and a lot of vines. So, you know, from an area view, it does look green, but really, there's a strip of trees along the road and some random trees throughout, but it is all blanketed in vines. So there is tree save there, but there's really not, and I don't expect any to remain once homeowners move in.
So you guys are gonna clear the entire lot?
Well, it's not that they would, per se, but I mean, certainly, we will clear the 50-foot buffer.
Right.
Because there's, there's nothing in there.
Basically, the area that your foresters identified that said this isn't worth saving, we agree that we will now go in there and plant new, proper buffer species, even though, as she said, it maybe looks vegetated and wooded, it's really not. So we will get in there and make sure it's a proper wooded buffer.
So not to say that they would come from the buffer and clear to where the homes are, but I would expect at some point, somebody will do that because there's nothing there. It's just vines. So I did, from this plan, I did request the landscape architect to add a few more trees. I noted some areas I wanted to be filled in a little more, especially like at the bottom of the page where Moses Milch Drive comes in. Yeah, we discussed that area, maybe to add some more evergreen trees, just so the people coming out of Moses Milch, their headlights, I expect, will be in the, you know, the backyard. Because again, there are no trees like that.
And the applicant has agreed with all those comments? We really appreciated her time coming out and working with us, but we'd agree to that.
And then just for the record, a design waiver is required for the tree replacement calculations, based on the tree plots that we did and the clearing area. So we do need to request a waiver so we can contribute to the Township Tree Fund. Like I mentioned, we are planting a significant amount of trees onsite, although what we're clearing is not necessarily ideal. So we will work with Ms. Barrow on the actual tree fund contribution amount for something that she agrees is a fair amount for trees that are not as desirable as the ones that we are putting back.
How about, is there a sidewalk?
We are proposing sidewalk along the entire frontage.
And curbing, right?
The curbing is existing. We're providing a four-foot sidewalk along Ramtown Greenville, as well as the proposed roadway on both, well, on both sides of the cul-de-sac and on the hour side of Ramtown Greenville.
Well, it'll dead-end at the horse form.
Correct.
And then you have that existing home at the east side. That's not yours, obviously, but that, you know, that's the issue with sidewalk connections, right? The sidewalks can go all the way around and it's gonna stop at that house. And then there's Michelle Boulevard right there, so there'll be no sidewalk from, from there to there. I've seen, we've seen this time and time again, so Jen, I don't know, is that something we could, we could work with, with connecting that sidewalk?
I mean, we take money from applicants throughout the community, throughout the municipality that we determine that sidewalks are inappropriate, it goes into a sidewalk fund. Should the town determine that connecting this sidewalk to the sidewalk on Michelle Boulevard, we could tap into the sidewalk fund and, like, they're paying into the fund based on a linear foot dollar. So we can, that's the whole purpose of getting that fund together, so when we see these little patches and we want to connect the entire sidewalk network, that's what the fund is for. So we can tap into that fund and the town can, you know, put that section of sidewalk in. We can't ask them to do it, it's beyond their property line, but we have that fund that we can tap into for this section of sidewalk to make the network connect. That's all purpose of the fund.
You doing underground utilities?
Yes.
And the street's gonna be, we're gonna have sanitary sewer at the street?
Yes, the sanitary sewer, there's gonna be an easement on Lot C, which is the western lot. The nearest sewer main is at the intersection of Moses Milch Drive, so that's where it will connect.
And I know you're coming up to the retention pump, but what's the purpose of this retention pump being this narrow wall? I don't understand why it's so big. It's only, it's only three houses, wasn't it?
So the way the stormwater regulations work, and I agree with you, I'd love for it to be smaller. The way the stormwater regulations make us reduce stormwater, this is a wooded lot today, which means you have no flow for some of the design storms and then little flow for the larger design storms. So we have to reduce or meet those limited flows. So even though it's a... So we have to reduce or meet those limited flows. So even though it's only three houses, you have to essentially hold all of the water for a, for, you know, a certain amount of time to meet the existing flows.
You're gonna have recharges on the house, come off, coming off the gutters?
Yep, so each house has a dry well to collect the roof runoff, and then the remaining runoff from the road and driveways and the associated lawn areas will be collected with inlets and routed to uh the buyer retention basin where it'll be attenuated to redu- reduce flows and then released um, into the existing stormwater system.
Yeah, with no runner and all that stuff, it's supposed to be natural and happy.
Yep.
Maintenance on the retention pond will be on the homeowners, correct?
Correct. There will be HOA for the, yep, for maintenance of the dry wells and the retention pond.
Will the retention pond be fenced in?
Yes, there's a fence around it.
Complying with Mrs. Bean's requirements on that?
Like split rail fence with the anti-climbers?
Yep. If not, we'll make sure. It, it should be, but we'll make sure we, we
No, it better be.
Oh, it will, it will be. It will be. Yes.
And your ordinance for I just want to go back to stormwater maintenance. These dry wells, you need those as part of your stormwater management plan, so your HOA will also be maintaining those?
Absolutely. We talked about this before. Your ordinance requires this. Our HOA, even though the dry wells will be one per lot, the HOA is gonna be obligated. It's gonna be built into the HOA documents. So the basin and each dry well will be part of that obligation, single obligation.
So the only thing you want the township to do is plot a road?
Right.
And pick up your leaves and brush, right?
Right, right.
And, and then one last thing on the stormwater design while we're on the topic. So uh, another reason the stormwater basin is larger than you would expect, so we designed it to accommodate a fifteen percent impervious coverage for each lot. So that's the, the maximum allowed by the ordinance. So that way, if a homeowner comes in and they want to put a patio with deck, something in their backyard, they don't have to then put in a separate stormwater system to handle that. So it, it's all accounted for. They can go up to the maximum amount of impervious on their site.
And Doug, is the, is the sidewalk, do you have to count the sidewalk in as part of your calculations too?
Correct.
Or that got, or that got
Yes, we'll work, yep, we will work with uh CME to get that accounted for and
Right, okay.
I'm just gonna make a recommendation that the board disclose to any potential homeowners that this is an HOA with a privately maintained basin. I have a concern when you only have three lots, that at some point, they're gonna be at the governing body saying, we can't, don't have the funds to maintain it. The, the way the state regulations are set up, it is very difficult to maintain the individual BMPs, so I, I think there should be a disclosure um, so that anyone that's buying in here clearly understands that it is their obligation uh, as part of a homeowner in this community uh to maintain that basin.
Agreed.
And, and we, we would have a declaration that establishes that HOA.
Is there, is there a deed?
And it would be, yeah, it would be recorded against every lot. And it, and we would send it for review either to the board or the town attorney, whoever reviews it. But we, that could certainly be in bold and, you know, in a recorded declaration that every homeowner
We've been down this road before in the past, there's been mistakes fifteen, twenty years ago. With retention ponds and the township coming up for it.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's not, it's not fair to
No.
outside existing taxpayers to be, to be, you know, to, to, to be doing to me.
No, understood, completely understood. It would be loud and clear in the declaration. It would be in their title reports. They would be technically considered to be on notice of it, whether they decide to read their title report or not. There'd be no avoiding that for any homeowner.
Let me be devil's advocate on this real quick, Laura. So, just because this happens in this town way too often. We have homeowners move in, it's conveyed to them, they have the obligation to maintain this. All well and good, year one, year two, year three, year four, year five, as we see throughout this town, right? What is the ultimate that happens if they just say, listen, we can't do anything about it? Okay, the town comes in, they find them, they find them, and then ultimately, we're, like Mayor Leggio says, we're cleaning up these basins like we're doing all over town anyway. What happens?
Unfortunately, there's really no enforcement
Yeah.
beyond that. So that's why we have the code enforcement regulation, and we can issue fines.
And there can, there can be an enforcement in terms of if the, if the town maintained those, those costs, those unit owners, those homeowners would be responsible for those costs, and it would be as if they owe property tax. So you'd have the same rights as if somebody didn't pay their property taxes.
Respectfully, there, it's expensive. And so when you're tasked with three homeowner, I can tell you what, like, the average fee is. It's somewhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So understand, if you're sitting at a council meeting and homeowners are coming in and expressing their concerns for that, that's what the board is trying to avoid.
Understood, understood.
So, I, I, that's why I mentioned it should be adequately disclosed, because the ability of a three-party homeowners association to be successful,
Yep.
I have my own concerns with, however, the regulations allow for this.
Maybe a larger, bold font.
Yeah, well, look at it, look at the debacle right next door on Michelle Boulevard.
Correct.
Okay, we have, it's that neighborhood that's right next door.
Right.
And they have a retention pond in the back that's, has, has had issues from day one. Standing water, even though it's technically supposed to stand and release into the ground, the board table's high.
Right.
There's always water in it, and we just, you know, the same thing. Those homeowners over there cut the grass. They have to stay away from certain plants because the plants are in there, you know, to keep the slope together and all that stuff. I get, you know, I get all that.
No, I, I understand. We, we would certainly, a, as you said, a, a, a bolder font and any other means to make sure all the homeowners are fully aware.
Mrs. Gucciara, are you fine with that, sir?
I'm fine with it, although it's, uh, it's a problem that's almost impossible to avoid. As a town attorney, I've been in that exact position, sitting with my board, and even with the disclosure, you know, people, particularly like first-time homebuyers, it's difficult for them to process and fully appreciate what it even means to, to have that responsibility, but we can do as much as we can to make sure that, you know, people are walking in with the knowledge at least.
Yeah. That was a good segue to my next question for you.
Sure.
So, I gotta switch my, to my old fart glasses here. Um, on your grading plan, you, you did perk testing, right? And I guess, I'm assuming Dynamic did the perk test.
Yes.
You went down eleven feet and you didn't hit groundwater in that area, Howell? I find that very hard to believe.
Especially given the Michelle Boulevard subdivision.
I, I mean, that, I, I, I drilled there, and I know for a fact you're hitting water within ten feet.
It's not, have you ever been to the horse farm, Jen, next door?
Yeah.
Where it puddles out in the road in front of that big oak tree?
Yeah.
It's cr- you know, and that's, that's actually down the road from you, another, you know, two hundred feet maybe.
Right.
But you got the stream up there too.
A little to the west.
It's always overflowing.
I, I'm just a little concerned that if, if basin construction was based upon not hitting groundwater, water within eleven feet.
Yeah, so, w- one thing I will say to that in the CME review letter, uh, because we did essentially poked holes around the entire site.
Yeah.
But we don't have enough testing within the basin footprint at this time. So CME is requiring two more tests within the footprint of the basin.
Yeah.
So once that is completed, we will give that information to
Wait till it rains a little bit, because it hasn't rained in like, you know.
Can we, can we, uh, does the municipal staff, can we have them make arrangements if they want to witness those tests, to come witness those tests?
I would say Laura's office should witness the test.
We could, we could contact municipal staff so that everybody is
Listen, we just know the area where it's really
Yeah, absolutely.
And glad we're going back out there, so we can have everybody take a look.
Um, and then, just while I got the microphone for two other questions. Um, these are monster houses, right? Forty-five hundred square foot. Why do you need on-street parking? Like, don't you have a pretty darn big driveway? I, I'm just confused why, why you would even need on-street parking.
We were pro- providing on-street parking. The discussion um with CME's office was to review the fire truck circulation to see where on-street parking would have to be restricted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we were able to show that circulation would work if essentially four cars were parked on that west side of the road.
I mean, those driveways probably hold about twenty cars, right? I mean, I just, it was just a question.
Dimensionally, I think each driveway could hit foot, hit four cars. And then at this time, we don't have plot plans, so a, a s- house of this side is, is most likely going to have a garage, so you have another car or two there. So I, I agree with you, there is a surplus of parking.
Yeah.
Um.
But in, in part, the parking, obviously, having parking available to the property owners is, is much better for those owners than not having it. And if they ever needed to use parking like that and it wasn't available, technically, that car would go park in the neighbor's street. So while it's there, while it's off the main beaten path, you don't have through traffic, your emergency vehicle's still circulating. We feel it's a benefit to have it available to them. Why, why cause somebody to go into another neighborhood? And if the driveways are big enough, it'll self-police. You won't really have cars sitting up there.
Well, I can tell you right across the street on Moses Milch, there is no, the, the parking on those streets, completely jammed up.
Right.
Because the homes are
Right.
you know, four, five, six, uh, cars that, you know.
That's where I'm going, but I didn't want to say it, John, but
Thanks, you're Mr. Vidiallo.
I know that neighborhood, it's my neighborhood, so, you know, Moses Milch is, is off the, is right off the back. You ain't going on Moses Milch, I can tell you that much.
Right.
Now, Michelle Boulevard, same thing. Now, you're only supposed to park on the one side.
Right.
Okay, and that road with those massive houses and massive driveways now has multiple cars in the street too. So, but it's a longer road, it's wider, so we're, that's, you know, his concerns are because it's a, it's a, a narrow co- you know, it complies with DOT and all that as far as the size, but if you put cars on both sides of a, of that roadway heading into the cul-de-sac, okay, that could be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why, uh, just approximately, like, two-thirds of the, the frontage on Road A, parking would be restricted. So at, at most with the signage, like I said, it's about a hundred feet, so you'd probably get four, maybe five cars in that hundred feet.
And will you guys be providing the signage and parking on, on one side of the road, or the township's gonna be doing that?
We'll, we'll put no parking signs.
That'll be part of our, that'll be part of our thinking.
Make it clear to the homeowners too, that's
Oh, it'll be signed, it'll be properly, yeah. It'll be built to municipal standards, including signage. It has to be by up.
Streetlights?
Yeah, so we are currently proposing two streetlights, uh, one at the end of the cul-de-sac and, and one um, in the middle between the cul-de-sac and um Ramtown Greenville. We'll work with CME's office. I think they want it a little bit closer to Ramtown Greenville. Uh, so we'll work with them to see if, if we shift that down, do they want a third light?
Laura, I think, I think two at the entrance to Ramtown Greenville are staggered, one on each side. So that way, your entranceway coming in is well lit.
Exactly what we said, was we recommended shifting the light gators closer to the intersection.
Yeah, I think this, you know, listen, I'm not even particularly happy with your, with your, because that's a sharp curve right there, so
Right, right, right.
What's a traffic light?
I would have preferred seeing that driveway lined up on Moses Milch, but then that would change the trajectory, trajectory of the entire, then you wouldn't have the lot the same way.
But pull, you're pulling the lighting more, pulling the lighting more towards that intersection now.
You understand what I'm saying? When you come around that bend
Right.
from the schools, it's a tight, it's a tight bend.
Right.
And then boom, you're gonna have an intersection, you know.
Right.
So I recommend it also on Ramtown Greenville Road in both directions. Signage saying intersection ahead.
Yes. We received that today from the police department. They even sent us a copy of the signs that they'd like to see out there. So we would comply with the police department's report. It's an email report, but they have the same copy.
What about line of sight for, for a police department? Did they have any input on that?
Yes, um, they deferred to the engineer, um, but we are trimming back the buffer along the intersection. You can see how there's a little bit of grass space in between where that buffer starts, and that is to provide the compliant site triangle.
Right.
Yeah, but you're on the inside of a curve, so do you actually have, you're, you, you plotted all out here and it makes it look like you can see, but being on the inside of the curve, is it your opinion that there's adequate site distance?
Yes, I'm
Like, site triangle is not the same as site distance.
Yeah, so we, we follow the roadway lanes with the site triangle. So it doesn't just go straight. It follows the curve around and then
Right, but can you physically see? I mean, I get you can draw a rec- a triangle on a set plan. I get that.
Mm-hmm.
But like, when you're there, how far out into the road does a car actually have to be before you can actually see cars coming?
Yeah.
Because I don't think you're at that stop bar and you're able to see cars coming.
Here's the problem right here, okay?
That's what I'm saying.
This is, this is a blind spot.
Fifty mile an hour blind spot, okay? So this sight line right here, I know we got these proposed, we need to shift, Mrs. Sparrow. We shift this, shift this back or shift this over or lose these, put them someplace else? I don't know how many feet, maybe fifteen feet, twenty feet, thirty feet, needs to stay open on both sides of this, come, so that way these sight lines are gonna be clean. It looks, it looks nice with, you know, fancy all these trees, but that doesn't be crap unless you're driving on the road. It's fine right now. That's a, that's a sharp curve.
But Mayor, I'm also concerned that if a car stops at that stop bar shown on that graphic that you're at, whether there's trees in the site triangle or not, you're not gonna see cars whipping at fifty miles an hour.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, this is gonna have to be clear.
You're gonna have to, the car's gonna have to extend almost into the right of way to be able to see cars coming from the left.
So the, the site triangle is measured from the, that's a, a standard set by ASHTO to measure back from the travel lane to where that site triangle starts, and then based on the speed limit, extend down the lane in each direction. So if you're looking left, in this case, you have three hundred and thirty-five feet of clear site triangle, and that, none of those trees are proposed in that site triangle. So that should be cleared, low grass. So you have a clear sight for three hundred and thirty-five feet to the left. You look to the right, you also have three hundred and thirty-five feet, um, and, and
So, so the car traveling fifty miles an hour at the three hundred and thirty-five feet, if somebody pulls out in front of that car, that's, that's, that's a stopping
Yeah, based on ASHTO guidance, that is
Yeah, that's your stopping distance.
But let me ask you, Doug, following up with the mayor's comment, notwithstanding with what you just said, i- if you work with the township forester, we, I, I think the applicant would agree to shift some of those trees, work with township forester, make sure they go to go above and beyond.
The trees are the problem, like, the trees are not the problem, because there's clearance underneath the trees that you can see. It's the curve of the road that's the concern. The trees will have the apron, like,
Right.
you know, when trees grow, there's clearance up to a certain height.
I was just pointing it out
It's shrubs that are more of a problem than trees. It's more the geometry of that road.
Well, look
I was just pointing it out because Mr. Mayor commented on it, but o- o- otherwise, ye- yes, they comply with the ASHTO standard for the speed limit, for the road size, for the size of the intersection.
It's, well, I wrote, that's a fast road, but you don't have the, when you come around the bend and you have to slow down because, you know, there, it's supposed to probably be forty, forty-five, but I, but that's, that's a fair Yeah, the schools, you have three schools up the road that are gonna be coming down that road with buses every day, you know what I mean? It's a that, where you have the, the, the cul-de-sac entrance is tricky. You know, I don't know if it could be, if it could be shifted to the, keep it where your houses are, but can that, that
It's almost like taken away.
Take it, put it on the end. I don't know, I, I'm not an engineer. Laura, I don't know if the, if it could be redesigned further west to, to, to ease it more. I don't know, you know, without taking away your
Fump is worse.
Yeah, well, it's almost like you have to take it, take some of this
Yeah, you can't take the curve out, so.
Retention and put it in this place.
Yeah. No, that's even worse. If you go to the east with it, it's even worse. Because it's get, it wide, it widens out after you come around the bend right there.
If you go the other way, you're into the, the lot.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying to you, I just want to make sure, you know, sight lines are clear. You know, move your trees around, move your bushes around, whatever.
If, if we wanted to do some sort of offset off of the, the site triangle and eliminate trees even further from that to
But I, I, the, the, the issue, I understand that you're echoing on with the mayor saying, I don't think you're, you're listening. This road is exactly on the inside of a curve. Agreed?
Agreed.
I haven't seen a profile. So I'd want to see a profile that shows that you have clear distance to see, because what, what Jen is trying to say to you is that when you get that stop bar, I, I know you plotted out the look back, but the reality is the cars coming down are not gonna be in that vehicle's view. So the vehicle's gonna have to edge out of the stop bar. So we need more of a profile to make sure that the site distance is as you've represented.
We can prepare an exhibit, a sight line exhibit for this stop bar.
Yeah, and, and if it pleases the board, um, we could certainly demonstrate compliance with that. We would like the board to consider the application with that possibly as a condition of any approval the board might grant, unless the board feels like that's something that has to be observed first, um, obviously.
One of the things the board may wish to consider is, you could, um, if this is preliminary and final, so if the board wanted to act on the application, perhaps preliminary would be uh more appropriate. I would like for the board to be able to see um that sight line. I, I wouldn't be com- comfortable if it was granted preliminary and final with that as a condition. So that would be my recommendation.
And just understand, when you grant preliminary and final with these conditions, you don't see it again as a board. If you grant it preliminary with these conditions, they have to come back with all those changes made and presented to you.
Well, I, listen
You get to see it.
I'm uncomfortable without seeing it.
Yeah, so what we
That's all, that's all I'm asking.
Understood.
Okay, we're, we're, we need to protect the surrounding homes over there. That, that roadway is a very busy roadway, sir. We have three schools on that roadway. Busy, busy area.
Understood.
Heading out to Arnold Boulevard and, and, and uh back up Ramtown Heading out to Arnold Boulevard and, 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 uh, back up Ramtown-Greenville, that's a major, like when you went there, or when you went there with Cherry, it's, like you said Cherry, it's not really wooded, it's all vines, it's garbage, you know, especially from Arrow, you can see all the, the hole, all the holes. But that curve is quick, when you come down past the house that's ne- that's next to, the house that's next to, uh, Moses Milch.
Both directions, both directions.
Okay, up there by, by, uh, Mo- Moses Milch Drive, not the, not the second one, the first one, the other way.
This one?
Move that map down. Right there, see where Michelle Boulevard comes out?
Oh, this one.
So when these, those cars are coming down, they pass Michelle Boulevard, and then there's that, the guy's one house right there, and that's where everybody picks up that speed and comes around, you know, and if someone's making a left out of there, that sight line better be, better be, you know, I'm not concerned making a left into it coming from the west.
No, that's, yeah, that's.
It's, it's the, it's from the east, you know?
I understand, um, in, in light of the mayor's concern, we, we would prepare that exhibit, we'd request that we obviously not have any vote tonight. We'd prepare that, we'd submit it, and when the board could place us on another meeting agenda, we would come back to review that as part of the application.
So you're, you're not even seeking preliminary tonight then?
Yeah, we would, we would rather just come in and show it to you now, why we understand the concerns, why we, why we're fully engaged in what we need to change, and rather than later on, my team forgets exactly how we're supposed to amend things, so I'd rather make the changes now while we're very clear on what needs to be changed.
And, and you said that the, the police say defer to the engineer for the sight line, if my memory serves me correct, didn't we have a couple of applications where the police kinda, hey, this is what we want, so I, I would work with the Howell Police Department, because they're, they're familiar with, with this kinda stuff and, uh, take it pretty darn seriously. They've definitely, um, weighed in on other applications that we've seen in the past.
Yeah, we actually asked to have them contacted today, cause we hadn't had any correspondence from them. So, so they reached out to them and got that communication for us, cause we were interested to hear what they had to say.
Hmm.
So that's how we ended up getting that today, but, um, they did note the clear sight distances, and they said, but nonetheless, we'd like to see these signs, they're basically the driveway head signs, um, on both sides, both directions.
Hmm.
Which, that addresses part of the.
Reduce, reduce, sure, every, every street needs to reduce.
Alright, well, we need to.
Also, we're just concerned with, with, it's a high, you, you understand some, it, uh, it doesn't need a traffic study out, see, cause it's a minor subdivision, but if you wanna go out there and sit there.
Actually, a major subdivision.
It's a major.
Oh, a major, but it's not, it doesn't require a traffic study, correct?
Cause of the.
I mean, actually, the, the major subdivision checklist requires a traffic study, they asked for a waiver, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, modify, yeah, listen, there's a lot of.
And, let's, let's just be clear though.
There isn't a major, it's because of the road.
When the board grants submission waivers, when you look at the resolution, it says we're granting you this waiver for purposes of completeness. We're not saying that you never have to supply the information, we can still ask for it, we're just not gonna hold you up from beginning the hearing process. So the board, if it wants that information, it's still entitled to it.
I, I know Dynamic has a pretty, uh, hefty traffic division, so, I mean, it might.
We would certainly have them chime in on what we have to do now to make revisions.
Yeah.
We, I, I was planning to tell the client that that's what we.
Yeah.
If, if that driveway in any way, if this whole thing could be sh- possibly shifted a little bit, and that driveway could be facing more westward away from that sharp curve.
I don't think, John, I disagree with you a hundred percent, I, I think that's, that curve is going to be a nightmare regardless.
Either way?
Yes.
Well, there's no other, yeah.
Yeah.
Then the only other way is to put, put the driveway at this, at Moses Milch at the, at the bottom on the west side, and then have a travel road going through to the cul-de-sac, right Jen?
I mean, they could shift the cul-de-sac a little bit to the north, and have it not right at the center of that curve, a little bit farther, like, instead of like this, like this.
That's what I mean, I mean, anyway.
Into the pond a little bit.
But like, the in- the inside of the curve is, yes, Chris, exactly what I'm saying, into the, but the inside of the curve is worse than the outside of the curve, so.
Yeah, you wanna be looking into.
Correct.
The traffic coming, you want, you wanna be, yeah, of course.
Yeah, so it's just something to consider, I understand what they were trying to do, to drive, to, to split the baby and like make it as big as possible, but I do think they can make it work if they shifted that a little bit, outside of where you're kind of blind on the curve.
Yeah.
The interior curve is more concerning.
I mean, first day of school today, I'll, I'll be honest, I was blown away about how fast people go on that road at, you know, seven o'clock in the morning. Um.
Yeah.
I only got one more year there, so, then I get to deal with Howell High School, so, um.
Hey, hey, can I just ask Ms. Newman a question for the, the profile? Oh, what are you, I guess, looking for, for that profile to show, or your concern? Elevation change between?
We should see elevation, and you should see, I mean, it's exactly, like I said, you're plotting this as if the driver's gonna be looking back this way. You can see, it's all in the green, that's not helping, it's not showing that the car's coming, so there needs to be enough to see along of the road profile, the line of sight.
Okay, thanks, just, yeah, it's generally a, a flat sight, so between the northern end and then all the way at the western end, there's not a significant grade change, it actually goes down a little bit and then comes back up, so.
And would you agree with me that your, your driveway, again, you, you've kind of already conceded that you're gonna do this information, I understand you're looking for additional. Right now, you have a road proposed at the exactly point of the inside of a curve, correct?
I agree with you.
Would you, would you agree that sight distance is a concern on the inside of a curve?
I, I agree with that, and that is why we show the three hundred and thirty-five.
Okay, so stop with saying that you show the ASHTO sight triangle, we've already been through this eighty-five times in a day. Right now, for somebody that's coming out of that road to see a car heading southbound on the inside of that curve, they have to go beyond that stop bar. Because, like, i- it's unrealistic to expect people to look through a long area, they're gonna creep out into the road, and the speed limit's fifty. I can guarantee you that cars are on that road hauling at sixty-five plus around that curve, so. I'm, like, I get from a technical standpoint, the sight triangle is a sight triangle, from a realistic standpoint, what you're showing is causing the board concern. So they wanna make sure that a driver doesn't have to put their front end in the cartway to see cars coming, which are gonna result in accidents. That's the concern, correct Mayor, am I, am I misspeaking?
Listen, it's self-explanatory, we'll drive over there right now, and I'll show you what we're talking about, okay, I'm not trying to be a smartass guy.
No, no, I, I understand, I just.
You, you, you need to understand that this road is fast, it's not supposed to be that fast, but the speed limits don't matter, okay, our, our police officers are out there all the time, doesn't, that doesn't matter. When you come around that bend, I'm telling you right now, it needs to be, that needs to be softened out, that's no way, uh, on that straight line like that, i- i- it could work, it's, it's just not gonna.
Yeah.
I don't care, there's no landscaping at all, the grading, you could drop the grading down, whatever, here's, you know, people won't pay atten- they don't care what, where there's dri- if you go onto Moses Milch, the, the other street that's across, that's a nightmare getting out of that, that intersection, making a left, because when you get to that, when you come out of Moses Milch, and you look to your left, there's the horse farm right there on the same side of the road, and it's a little wooded, you gotta like stick your nose out.
Mm-hmm.
To see the cars coming from the what, you know, from the west side.
Yep.
The stuff from the, to the, to the east is easy, so you, you know, if you're making a right or a left, but that there, you may, if you're going east, left out of that driveway. You know, or right, if you're not paying attention to people coming around, that's split second, they're gonna catch up to you in two seconds, you know?
Uh, understood, and, and I don't, Ms. Newman, I don't mean to just be a dead horse here, I just wanna try to get the information from the, the group of people that we will be in front of in a couple of months, hopefully with more information, so I just wanna understand.
So I think one of the suggestions is relocate the road, is re- look at where you can shift that road specifically, maybe where you're a little bit more straighter on, or change the orientation of the road, that was one very specific request. In the absence of doing that, I have to, I would bring maybe a traffic engineer here to talk about the site distance.
Yeah, we, we would like to, I, I plan to, assuming my applicant obviously would agree, I would like to do that, bring in.
May- maybe, maybe the retention pond gets shifted to the other side.
We will, but we will have a.
Okay, what's the difference, right Jen, it doesn't, it don't really, I don't care where the retention pond is, okay, it's not our problem, it's the, it's the HOE's, and whatever the D E P wants, and what, what all that, if they can shift that, this whole thing and just move it, that's what you're paying, you know, all these big time engineers for. You know, come up with a, a smoother design, you know, a more, it's all about safety, guys.
Mm-hmm.
It's three houses, we're not, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel here, but it's, it's safety, that's a, that's a nasty curve, okay?
And it's a very, it's a very heavily.
Travel.
Pop, but it's a very heavily populated section of the town too.
Oh, it's, it's, that, that area is nuts, with the, with the three schools being there, yeah, it's, it's, it's.
And Mr. Chairman, hearing that they're gonna come back, I would ask for the additional soil testing too?
Yeah, please.
But wherever this retention pond's gonna be, make sure that, you know, wherever the, the, the water table that you're talking about, so.
Yeah, um, another good segue, did you guys do, uh, a phase two out there, soil investigation, historic, um?
No, so that was one of the last things in, uh, my outline, so we, um, we talked to the applicant, they don't have any historic environmental testing out there for the phase one or anything like that, but they are going to comply with the historic, um, pesticide testing.
They are.
In the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Condition of approval.
The, the, the applicant does not have any data, they've owned the land a long time, they don't, but they will go out and get those tests.
Yeah.
Listen, I grew up over there, but I'm a rooster dog, that has been like that since I came here in, in the early eighties.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Alright, I'm just letting you know, that, that's been, that's like that since the early.
Yeah, but we'll still do the soil test, it's important.
Yeah, it was a, it was agricultural from the thirties.
Yeah.
And prior to about nineteen sixty.
And then, and then it got, it got overgrown because somebody abandoned it, whatever, whatever happened, you know?
But we'll test the soil.
Perfect.
As a, as a con, we'll test it.
Beautiful, thank you. Um, well, I'll leave it up to you, Counselor, do you wanna continue with the, I mean, or do you wanna try and get a, a date for coming back and discussing, going back to the drawing board and having more conversations?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm gonna ask my engineer, cause it's, were you close to concluding your principal testimony?
Yes, yeah, I had the utilities, which we talked about, environmental, we just talked about.
So Laura, no streetlights out front, just, just on the cul-de-sac, correct?
No, we asked my, our technical report, which I'm assuming they're gonna agree in totality, is to shift the lights closer to the intersection.
Yeah, but I'm saying, at the intersection, but no, no streetlights.
Like nothing along Ramtown-Greenville Road.
To the left and right.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, if he was very close to concluding, I was, unless the board doesn't want to, I was just gonna have him finish.
Of, of course. I would have him finish.
Okay.
So why don't you just wrap up your primary testimony, and we'll ask the board what they'd like to do from that point.
Sure, um, yeah, we, I think I'm.
I'm not sure there's much more.
Yeah, I'm pretty much done, the utilities we talked about and the environmental, so the other thing was just the, the reports, but I, I did my best to hit all of the open items in the reports as I went, so if there's any.
Well, I, is there anything in the reports that you can't, that you do not agree to comply with?
No, the, the, the only clarification was, we will definitely show renderings to comply with the non-look-alike ordinance, but that would be at the time of building permit.
Honestly, I, I don't know that we need to see the renderings.
Right, there's a note on the plan.
But I think their commitment to compliance with the look-alike requirement, I think is, is as much as we need.
That's fine.
And there's a note on the plan that says that.
Yes.
There's a note on the plan.
Well, look-alike to what, Jen, to Michelle, Michelle Boulevard?
So we have, we have a requirement, meaning that the three houses can't look alike.
They can't look alike.
Can't look alike.
They can't look identical.
The three houses can't look alike.
Can't look alike, right, so we will make sure that they can't look alike, right.
So it's not like, boom, 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 boom.
The, the roofline, the siding, whatever.
Yeah, people save money with their architect, they design one house and they try to build it three times, your ordinance doesn't allow that.
We don't allow for that.
Don't allow that, so that's part of our assumptions, we have a note on the plan, we intend to comply, we have to comply, so they won't look alike.
Are these gonna be built out with full basements?
Uh, it, you know, they do not know what type of houses or what they would be built, they will most likely have basements, um, but they really haven't decided, um, what type of house would even be built there, they wanna see more with the market, with the, what the buyer might want.
See Jen, the only issue I have with not seeing what, what's gonna be built there is like with the basement, right? We, you know, if, if it comes back and it's approved, we approve this, and then we don't see the other part of it, right? We don't see what the houses are gonna look like, okay, and they're wa- and they, they, they come back and it's wa- in full blown basements with the walkouts, you know what I mean, that's.
Well, they're gonna have to provide a plot plan to the town, it won't come back before you, but they'll have to provide a plot plan.
No, go to, to, yeah, to the town.
To the town for review on, on everything, to make sure everything's compliant, if anything in what they're proposing on the plot plan does not comply, they're gonna have to be back before you.
Of course, of course.
Or the zoning board, right?
Yeah, of course.
Cause it's gonna be a single family home, and this is a subdivision, they're not obligated to provide us with like full architectural plans.
Okay. Eileen, what are we looking at schedule wise?
Well, before we.
Sure, Ron.
Before we do that.
Yeah.
Just, Mr. Vidello, what kinda time do you think your team needs in order to get all of that together before we start picking out dates for you?
Well, um, are you, uh, you may be booked at least a month out, right?
Well, no, I'm saying how much time do you guys need, because if they need a month, we're not gonna look at less than a month, they need two months, we'll start looking at two months.
Two months.
Two months?
More in the two month range, yes.
Okay, so.
So September, October, November, no earlier than the beginning of Na- November, we need two months.
Um, we have one meeting in November, that's November sixth, otherwise they have December fourth, or December eighteenth, or January eighth.
Eleven, six, twelve.
Four.
Twelve, four.
Twelve eighteen.
Twelve eighteen.
Or January eighth, twenty twenty-six.
We'd like to please be scheduled for eleven, six, if it please the board, November sixth, sorry.
November sixth, so what's the, uh, November date?
November sixth.
November sixth.
And I'll just need an extension of time from you.
Well, let me just think the announcement.
Yes.
So, case number S D three zero two two, Cody Milch, two thousand and eleven trust, be carried to the boards November sixth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. It is a live meeting beginning here at seven o'clock in the main meeting room at Town Hall, let me know for their notice to property owners. And Counselor, you're granting an extension of time till the end of November?
That's correct, I am.
Okay.
I'm over there.
Yeah.
Whatever works for you, sir, that's two months, you get all your ducks in a row, you keep these ladies over here happy, cause I don't wanna hear, hear them, cause we have to hear it after you leave, so, um, um. We're very diligent here, if, if you haven't figured that out already.
Absolutely.
Definitely, we understand.
We're, we're here to represent the, the residents, okay, I just happen to also be the mayor, so I am gonna do my due diligence on every single application.
Yep. Absolutely, appreciate it.
I know it's not popular with some, some of the, some of the professionals, well, that's just tough.
That's not, that's not what we're here for.
I'm not trying, you know, we, we have to do our due diligence up here.
Yeah. I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
That, that curve is a, is a serious issue.
Understood.
Understood.
That was a straight road, this, this is done already, this application is done, guys, we're, we're all going, okay? Cause it looks good, it's, you know, it's not that you, you do have some technical stuff.
Understood, understood.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it, we'll see you in November.
Have a great night.
You too. Jennifer, any master plan update?
So, to date, I have not been made aware of any formal challenge to our housing plan, which would have had to be in by Sunday at midnight. There is additional information that's being requested from Fair Share, we're probably gonna have to amend the plan to include this additional information. It's like housekeeping stuff, it's nothing substantive.
Gotcha.
But we may have to amend the plan at some point between now and December thirty-first.
Okay.
Not one, one application that came up?
I haven't gotten any, so from what I understand, and Ron probably can also attest to this, from what I understand is that the deadline for the submission of any objections was midnight at, on August thirty-first, which was Sunday, and apparently people waited until the eleventh hour and then overloaded E-courts, and then E-courts kind of shut down, I don't know this for a fact, but this is what I've heard, Ron, have you heard the same thing?
Yes.
And so, there are definitely things that have been filed Tuesday morning, there's also the, the, so the, the legislation required the submission by midnight, August thirty-first. But typically, when there's a deadline at E-courts and it falls on a weekend, it carries to the next day, the next day was Labor Day. So there are some things that got filed yesterday, no, Tuesday morning.
Hmm.
But like, we did not adjust our number, we complied, so we haven't gotten a lot of hits from people that said that they should be in the plan and we didn't put them in the plan, it's more Fair Share asking for additional information, so.
Okay.
I think we're in good shape, are we gonna have to amend the plan to include this additional information, a hundred percent?
Got it.
But, we're not in a bad position, like, I work in one town in Somerset County and we got twelve objections, so.
Hmm.
It's gonna be a fun fall, winter for me in that regard, but we are not on that hit list.
Whatever.
Okay, good news, uh, Ron, any reason to go into executive?
Yeah, I know, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.